Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the January 11th meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Called to order Chairman Shadwick.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Vidrickson.
Here.
Wees.
Here.
And White.
Well, please join me for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone can make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you're not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now if Brad or IT Director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning Brad.
Folks that have joined the Zoom meeting are looking for the raise hand function in their Zoom client. By raising your hand, that lets the host know that you'd like to speak in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Please state your name and address.
Dalton McDowell, Slayne. Who is the medical doctor that is giving Jason all his information? Because I was told at one point you guys had a medical provider on the board, but nobody will come out and say who it is. And Jason, at this point, is not even following CDC guidelines on quarantines. Quarantines from the CDC, recommended quarantines have changed, and he's always following CDC guidelines. Well, when is he going to change the county quarantine mandates?
Okay, I can't answer that off the top of my head, so we will look into that. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? At this time, I will approve a consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of approval of prior minutes as presented, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into action items. Item number one.
National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation by Sheila Beeson, Sexual Assault Advocate. D-VAC.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today.
You bet.
Yes, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation. Whereas, millions of men, women, and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second largest and fastest growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas, human trafficking denies victims basic human dignity and freedom, and is based on recruiting, harboring, transporting people through use of force, fraud, and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas, traffickers frequently target victims and then use violence, threats, lies, false promises, debt bondage, or other forms of control and manipulation to force victims to work against their will, or to keep victims involved in commercial sexual exploitation. Whereas, the US Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking, and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Central Kansas in the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we can commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us that united we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and for the rights of every person. Now therefore, the Slayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims January 2022 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and applauds the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and private sector supporters for their efforts in opposing human trafficking in all its forms. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your efforts and what you do and provide there to the community. And do you have any other items or anything going on to help?
We sure do. And actually, today, I'm here with my coworker Jer, and she's going to read her proclamation next to you. And together, we're offering outreach opportunities where we can come and present. We are presenting to schools and different local groups. We're going to have some information throughout the month regarding these topics today about how people can help and identify these crimes against our society and how they can support our local victims. Yeah, and it's just kind of low-key this year with COVID and everything. As far as live events, most of it's going to be social media for the most part.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into item number two.
National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation. Jer Cooper, Domestic Violence Advocate. D-VAC.
National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation, January 2022. Whereas, stalking is intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that person to feel fear and endangerment for themselves or their family. The variation in stalking behavior ranges from hang-up phone calls to more direct threats toward a victim. The likelihood of injury increases when the stalking behavior escalates over time. Whereas, under the laws of Slayne County, Kansas, and all jurisdictions in the US, stalking is a crime. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance. And three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by that same intimate partner. Whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that 127 protection from stalking orders were filed in Slayne County in 2020. Whereas, the statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking for multiple reasons, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement, and stalking is a tactic of domestic violence and sexual abuse, so it may not be reported as a primary form of abuse and victimization, although the victim has experienced stalking along with other forms of abuse. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, communities can better combat stalking by raising awareness, adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and by providing more and better victim services. And now therefore, the Slayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2022 as National Stalking Awareness Month.
And thank you. And before we move on, I need to catch myself because I need to go back to proclamation, item number one, the national slavery. We need to vote on that, and the county needs to vote on that. So if we could take care of action item number one first, if I could get a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim January 2022 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Slayne County.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation. Is there anyone that'd like to also have any comments? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, back to item two. Excuse me, I apologize on that. Item number two. Is there any other commissioners that have any comments or anything to say on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim January 2022 as National Stalking Awareness Month in Slayne County.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Pam, we have a proclamation here for you to pick up. Item number three.
RFA Number 103-22 Bid Award for Assistant Engineering Technician Pickup. Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This request for action is to purchase one new 2022 half-ton extended cab, two-wheel-drive, Assistant Engineering Technician Truck that was let out for bid according to county policy 40-32. We received two bids, one from Midway Motors of McPherson, Kansas for $30,285, one from Long MacArthur Ford Salina, Kansas for $38,995. Alternative for action would be to accept the bid from Midway Motors, two, accept the bid from Long MacArthur Ford, three, reject the bids and direct staff to an alternate course of action. The staff recommends accepting the bid from Midway Motors. This truck will replace a 2005 Ford F-150 half-ton two-wheel drive with 190,000 miles. This vehicle will be sold on Purple Wave Auction website. Delivery time is expected to be four to six months. We did let out bids for multiple trucks, and these were the only two bids we received was for this one truck.
Okay. What is the usage of this pickup to use for? It's like it's nothing that we have or need a four-wheel drive? A two-wheel drive is sufficient for this?
Two-wheel drive is sufficient. This vehicle is the engineer technician truck. His main focus is usually with looking after the contractors, inspecting their work, like the paving contractors. And then he inspects culverts, he inspects the little small box bridges, those types of things. He's really not that heavy use.
Gotcha. Okay. Right. Anyone from the public you'd like? Oh, any other commissioners? I'm sorry.
Couple questions Darren. I'm a little surprised that there's a 23% difference between the two bids. Were these apples-to-apples, these two trucks?
Yes.
And you mentioned that you let out for bid multiple trucks.
We did. One was a three-quarter ton, two-wheel-drive, two-door truck for a fuel truck. The other one was a one-ton crew truck with a work box on the back, and we received no bids for those two vehicles. And the chip situation is getting harder and harder to get, especially with the construction trucks, the work trucks, they're just getting harder to come by.
Okay. Do you have any trucks that were let out for bid and received last year that you haven't?
No, no, we did receive the vehicle.
You have all your vehicles from last year?
Yes, yes, we did. Just curious, is this a Dodge, a Chevy, a Ford? This is a Ford. So it really is apples-to-apples? Yes. Not one brand with a buying incentive or anything like that? It is apples-to-apples 2022. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public who wish to speak? Or bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action? Oh, excuse me, we have someone from the public. Could we speak? I'm sorry.
I know we're not talking about it, but he is just talking about crew trucks. Have we thought about, have you thought about going with the Kenworths since they can make, and they're having a little easier time with their chips and stuff? Getting a heavier-duty truck like a semi chassis? I understand on the truck that you're bidding on to now, it wouldn't be reasonable, but he was talking about crew trucks. You can do that with the bigger trucks.
Thank you. We'll take that in consideration. Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Midway Motors in the amount of $30,285 for the 2022 half-ton pickup as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA Number 103-22 Bid Award for Assistant Engineering Technician Pickup. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move into informational items. Item number one.
Emergency Management Update. Michelle Barkley, Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioner. As Brad pulls that up, I... Next slide. I will provide you a little update just on COVID. We have sheltered six people since our last update to the state. I report monthly for them, sheltering and the type of populations, whether they're homeless, healthcare workers, public safety. During in-service back in October, my office did participate in distributing an after-action survey to county employees. This provided us with some feedback on how they felt the county and their departments did in the response to COVID, and if there was anything beneficial that they learned, or if, for instance, one of the questions we asked if their career goals were impacted due to COVID. So we compiled that information, and we provided that in November to department heads at our next executive staff meeting. On January 6th, the governor did issue a 15-day disaster declaration. This is very specific to hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, and long-term care facilities, so it doesn't necessarily change anything for the rest of us, i.e. my office or the health department, because we don't fit in that category. Next slide. This is a photo that we took from the Smoking Hill Bombing Range Full-Scale Exercise. Next slide. We did participate with 12 agencies back on October 22nd as the second half of our tabletop exercise that we did back in March of last year. This was quite an event. I appreciate everyone's participation, and the bombing range was very grateful. And now we look to make this a yearly thing between both the Army and the airside. I also participated and presented at the Public Safety UAV Workshop that was put on by K-State. That provided just a basic understanding of what role UAVs operations could play in disasters. It was to, the audience was basically first responders in law enforcement and fire capacity. We also participated in a cybersecurity training with the IT Department, which we plan to then incorporate the 911 Center and participate in the next training in March of this year. And in December, 15 agencies participated in the yearly integrated planning workshop that we had. This basically allows the county to identify training and exercises that would benefit the whole community in areas that we need more experience in. Some of those areas consist of cybersecurity and just basic preparedness as we learned in December. Some of the things that we're used to, like power outages due to turnover and new individuals taking jobs, we're still needing refreshers. Next slide. This was a photo that was taken in Russell County on the December 15th. Next slide. We've had 25 earthquakes in the last 30 days, with the largest one being a 4.3 in January. We're on the 11th, and we've already had two at least three-point magnitude earthquakes. The windstorm, we had reported 90-plus mile-per-hour winds, total of at least $1.1 million in damage. We have had our preliminary damage assessment conducted by the state. As you can assume, we have easily surpassed our threshold, and we are now included into that category. The other pictures present just, the bottom photo on the right is just other wind peaks from December 15th showing the drought monitor update as of December. Again, today, we're in a high-to-very-high fire danger day just with the relative humidity and the lack of moisture. And then, I'm not complaining, but we're having a very warm winter, so that can be displayed also. Next slide. A little update on the rural fire districts. They will be taking their tests for firefighter one and two and completing their training this month. In 2021, we had about 1,800 controlled burns. We did mail out the new permit amendment letters. Through that process, we've been able to clean up the system. We had about 1,500 permits, and now I think we're down to about 1,300 just due to people moving and no longer wanting to farm and things like that. The fire districts are continuing to have challenges with their pagers and the new radio system. But as you can see on their calls for service in October, November, and December, they have been quite busy with med calls and fire other calls consist of like vehicle fires or grass fires and things like that. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Question, Michelle. The 1,808 controlled burns that we had in 2021, how many of those needed assistance from the rural fire departments for control?
Officially or unofficially?
Give me the unofficial.
I would probably range about 250. So one of the new perks of having the amendment of asking if there's adequate water on hand, I will admit that I've had several residents say, isn't that what the rural fire department is for? And we're hoping through this, we can educate that we're trying to be proactive and mitigate some of those call-outs for services, especially with the number of volunteers. And as you can see, they are handling a lot of calls already that are serious. There's no need to add another strain on them during the workday and weekends.
And one last question. The pager issues that the firefighters are having, will the towers eliminate those issues?
Yes. And we've got some, even just this week, we've been working on some remediation measures. We've added them to the McPherson Tower, so we'll test on Thursday to see if that improvement works. And then whenever the Assyria Tower comes up and is operational, that should also fill that gap as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick question here.
Getting back to the earthquakes, is there somebody that could help us understand the frequency that is happening? Is there an expert out there that can give us an educated guess that the public? Because we obviously don't know what's happening, but I've lived here a long time. Commissioner Vidrickson's lived here longer, and I mean, all of us have lived here a long time, and this is unusual. And people are asking questions. Is there anybody out there that can help us with that?
So I did speak with USGS on December 14th before I went on the radio to discuss earthquakes. And their scientist in Kansas City basically says- And their scientist in Kansas City basically says that everywhere in the United States, aside from Florida and North Dakota, are basically prime for once in their lifetime to experience a time of micro tremors, which is just anything under three point five. Just that week when I had called, there was a cluster in Alaska and there was a cluster in South Carolina. So, and honestly, they're not large enough to cause concern. The four point three did cause some damage to gypsum, broken pipes, things falling off shelves like that. But honestly, unless you live in, like I said, Florida or North Dakota, there will always be shifting in the plates.
Okay, question back to the fire departments is that, is there any assistance? Let's say if you know that you're having a big fire, is there any assistance from any of the rural fire districts to help provide a water source to you before you do start the fire?
Yes, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, District Six revamped their tank that they have available. Anyone with a truck is welcome to loan it out if they need, if they've got a burn going. If they don't have transportation, my office is more than willing and welcome to transport it to your property as well. And it just provides some additional water on scene.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item number two.
County election office mailer, Jamie Doss, county clerk.
Good morning, Jamie. Are you there, Jamie?
Um, Patina, are you going to read that this morning?
I can go ahead and read it if you want.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Discussion of issue that I'm addressing today is the questions asked by the BOCC at the December twenty-eighth meeting. And this is about the National Voter Registration Act of nineteen ninety-three. It requires each state to conduct a voter registration list maintenance program. One of the approved methods for complying with this requirement is the U.S. Postal Service's National Change of Address Program, known as the NCOA. State law also gives us each county election officer a choice of conducting mass or targeted mailings instead of or in addition to participating in NCOA. Everyone must choose and implement one or both of these two options. The NCOA program is required by state law, C KSAA twenty-five dash twenty-three fifty-four and KAR seven dash thirty-eight dash one. Our office sent out thirty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-two postcards. The cost was five thousand forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents for printing. That's point one forty-nine, I think that's per postcard, yeah. And nine thousand four hundred and six dollars and fifty-three cents for mailing. And that's point twenty-seven cents for the postcards. Total cost is fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and seven cents. Our office was able to utilize the bulk mail postage account of a local printing company, which resulted in a cost savings of four thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. We have currently have thirty-five thousand six hundred forty-seven registered voter voters as of January third of twenty twenty-two with a current population of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six as of July one of twenty twenty-one. Information received directly from a voter is best for tracking changes in the voter's registration information. The name of the voter may not be removed from the registration list unless written confirmation is received from the voter. The election office uses other means to conduct list maintenance such as reviewing and researching obituaries, duplicate check reports, Kansas motor vehicle records, death notices from Kansas Department of Vital Statistics, felony records, jury duty list and cancellation notices from other counties and states. In conducting the mass mailing this year, we were able to help inform on the upcoming elections, how to update their information online and help in the recruitment of election workers. In doing so, this will cut down on follow-up mailings as well as help with our shortage of election workers that has significantly decreased over the last two years. December twenty-third, twenty twenty-one to January third of twenty twenty-two, there have been sixty-six voter registrations online as well as many in the office. We have received approximately fifteen new inquiries on being election workers. The county clerk is listed almost one thousand times in Kansas State statutes. This mailing is one of those items listed in statute similar to the change of value notice and personal property renditions by the appraiser and the tax statements by the treasurer. This item is figured in our annual election budget. The election office budget authority for twenty twenty-one was ninety-six thousand five hundred. As of January fourth of twenty twenty-two, there is an unencumbered balance of thirty-six thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
Okay, very good report. One of my main is just the time that it would take for, when you say review and research, all of these different, I mean, the time allocated to do all of these different things to figure out if that person is still at that address or not. I mean, it's amazing that that is applied, so. Thank you for your efforts. Any other questions by commission?
One quick question, and I don't know if you'll have an answer or not, but of your unencumbered balance, do you have any outstanding bills from twenty twenty-one that would be incurred against that amount?
Jamie?
I can probably answer that. We have a few, I guess, would say probably under a thousand dollars that are unpaid at this time.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item number three.
Jail project update by Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
And since Phil is not here, will we, oh, Philip is on the phone.
Phil is online, but I am going to take over for him.
Okay, thank you, Hannah, all right.
So this is an update on the jail project, this is the second update, and thank you, Brad, for pulling up these wonderful little pictures that we have. So lots of exciting things have been happening out at the site. As you can see, these pictures were taken from a camera that they have set up now on the construction building or the office building that they have set out there with the intention of being able to snap pictures of the progression of the site throughout the entire project. The picture that you're seeing here is them building the temporary road around the particular building. And if you want to move to the next picture. And this is a picture of the building pad site, so lots of progress that has been completed for the last few weeks here, at least since our last update. The Turner Construction Crew does have a safety officer that is on site and the construction crews did mobilize Friday and yesterday with the intention of being able to pour some concrete by the end of this week. Phil has indicated that the rebar was delivered yesterday, which is a good sign. And last week on our weekly call with the jail project team between the architect and the construction manager at risk, they were, had sent in some last-minute items that were needed for the first phase of the building permit to the city for their review. And then this week, they were going to be working on the information necessary and needed for the Phase Two building permit. So coming up, it is intended that the team will be in front of the commission on the twenty-fifth of January to talk about the secondary phase of the guaranteed maximum price. And then moving forward with that, our next monthly update is scheduled to be on February eighth of the project. So subject to any questions that you have, that is the update on the jail project thus far.
Okay, looks like it's moving around, I was up there the other day and it looks, it has changed a lot in the area. So anyway, look forward to that, keep it going, I hope the weather cooperates here continually for a while. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, we'll move into item number four.
County administrators update.
Good morning again, commissioners. Just a few items to update you on, probably one of the biggest things is the last on the American Rescue Plan Act. Last Friday, we had a call with our consultant, Iparametrics. And last Thursday, the IRS had put out the final rule that was associated with ARPA, which certainly definitely changed a couple of different things, probably one of the biggest changes was the definition in revenue loss. That final rule that was released on Thursday certainly does, it appears to kind of put us in a position to be able to claim some revenue loss. We will look into that a little bit more with our, with our team. We are working with Iparametrics on the grant agreements for the rural water districts for the, just a little over five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that you approved in grants to the different rural water districts or water and wastewater. Those are taking just a little bit more time to complete, but we do anticipate to have those out to the rural water districts. We're going to push back for those to be back to the commission for your final approval by the beginning of March. Just as another update for the county administrator, Phil will be out of the office next week, so you will get me again on next Tuesday. But certainly if there's anything that you need, we will be happy to help. Next on the list is commission redistricting. So this is something that occurs. The review is to occur about every three years, but now with new census numbers that have been received and then the redistricting or the reorganization of the commission that is scheduled for later today, it is time to look at redistricting the commission, commission areas. So definitely wanted to have a conversation with you as to that process and how you would like to conduct that. We've got a couple of different options, certainly establishing a committee to look at that. You can direct staff to look at redistricting or kind of a do-it-yourself type of thing. So the goal is, is that we want each commission district to be as compact and equal in population as possible. So certainly open to any comments that you have.
I just have a quick question here in regards to that issue as, has it been determined yet or have you guys looked at it ahead to find out if what is there right now has with the new values, has it changed enough to make that change?
I, unfortunately, I'm not able to answer that question. And that's certainly something that we can work with GIS with to find out.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so yes, there will need to be changes. The population has shifted enough that at least four of the five districts will need to have their boundaries altered. And so in speaking with the county clerk, we're just wanting to get some direction from the commission on how you would like that presented to you. You know, we don't want to just go out and propose something without having a discussion first about process. So that was really the purpose of kicking this off today.
Okay. I would suggest that with the tools we have available within the county with mapping and the clerk in conjunction with some key players, I would strongly suggest keep the commissioners plum out of it and bring us a recommendation. When they, when the county went to five board members, it was fractured, it was cut up, it was confusing. And somebody could surely put some little more sense to it so we can basically live up to the state statute, the law that we're governed underneath.
I think the last time it was done, before this commission took their seats more than five years ago, it was done by, I think, a single commissioner who just, you know, took the data that was available and did it that way. So I'm certainly not opposed to what, whatever administration, staff-wise, can come up with for a recommendation and I would support what Commissioner Whitehead just said. I mean, other than the fact to keep the commissioners out of it, I don't, that's fine with me or they can be involved either way, it doesn't really matter. But I think taking a recommendation from staff with the several people that he's mentioned, GIS, the administrator, the clerk, whatever, and, and try to, to align these districts a little more in line with what they should be, so.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, for sure.
Do we have some idea what type of timeframe you're talking there? Because there, this, this will be a year of elections coming up and, and the public needs to know what district they're in and who their representatives might be. And so do you have some type of timeframe of how quickly this could happen?
So my best guess is that we would probably have it done within the next couple of weeks and Phil can weigh into if he's got a better timeline.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if Jamie's still on, she could probably address it better than I could, but I would say we definitely need something in place, you know, substantially before the filing deadline for the offices. And the only wrinkle, I think, in that is the possibility that whatever the state does with House, Senate and Congressional districts could end up dividing some of the precincts within Salina depending on how it's done. And so that might be the only wrinkle in that schedule. But yeah, it should, the numbers are pretty straightforward. If you are comfortable with just a staff recommendation, we should be able to get that pulled together fairly quickly.
And, and you've mentioned that the filing deadline, and I think that's clear up into June, but I certainly wouldn't want it to see to go that long because someone who has the intention of filing, perhaps all of a sudden they're in a different district, you know, that may or may not run, whatever. So I would sure like to see it maybe if it's possible, like thirty days, forty-five days at the most, if that's possible.
Yeah, I think that's certainly doable.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, two other last things for you. So wanted to also have a discussion too about the potential or possibility of discontinuing the use of Zoom meetings. We do have Zoom set up through the end of January, but certainly something that in an effort but certainly something that, uh, in an effort to kind of return to some, some of those, you know, meetings without Zoom, we would still be streaming meetings to YouTube as well as Channel Twenty, but certainly wanted to have a conversation with the commission on your feelings of that.
One of my, my things is that it's just a thought first is with, with the COVID rise still going the way it is and the need, I would hate to stop something for a week or two weeks and then say, oh, we, we need to start this all back up. I don't know what it's cost, our cost is to do this or whatever, but I'm, 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 I, I would like to get to that point where I feel comfortable with being, but I can see, just like today. I mean, it's another one of those things, it's very convenient, it's, it's, but I understand that we need to get back to, away from the Zoom, but the way that the, it's moving right now, I, I can't see us doing that. But that's, that's up to somebody else besides me.
I, I think we need to not jump too quick. Just as Roger said, there's, the, the numbers are going up exponentially. I mean, they're, they're just going off the charts. I would like to see us certainly have this on the front, uh, front burner, but maybe revisit it, uh, say in thirty days or something to that effect, uh, rather than pull the plug on it within a week or two when there's, there's no way that can happen. I mean, I'm, what has there been a thousand, uh, cases, you know, in the last month or let, something to that effect? It's, it's unbelievable. The convenience is there, and, uh, I, I think as, as staff, as commissioners, uh, you know, we preach, uh, if you don't feel well, stay home. Uh, and in, in today's world, I think we still need that availability, uh, of, I mean, we've got some staff and some commissioners that aren't here today, you know, and for that very reason. Uh, I, I think to pull the plug on it just this quickly would not be advisable.
I concur.
Although the public, uh, doesn't use this as much as maybe I thought, um, it's still available to them. And I know nine o'clock meetings for a lot of people are, uh, not something they can do. And, you know, you hear that a lot, you know, over the years that, well, I can't make the meetings. Well, again, I, I know that it's not used a lot, but the technology is there. And, um, anybody that needs to, uh, speak to us, that doesn't feel comfortable either with a phone call or taking off work to come at nine o'clock, has this capability. And, um, I, I'm happy to look at it later, but I think that frankly, it's probably here to stay.
I, it is amazing of how many people that I run into that do watch it on television. It is, it's a, that's amazing to me. So it's, it's, I, I want to, I appreciate all of you out there in TV land that do watch us on TV. So I appreciate that and obtaining that, so. But anyway, uh, that's, I'm for that. You have something to say?
No, I.
Okay.
Just feel like it's too important of a tool right now with the way things are, that, that we need to maintain it and address it later.
Understood.
Is, I mean, when, when you said that, I've never asked that question before. Is there, is there a major cost or is there an extra cost to the county for doing a Zoom?
So there is the cost of the Zoom subscription licenses, but that is frankly minimal. Um, probably the largest cost comes into play when we talk about staff time that's, uh, associated with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Uh, well, we will revisit that, um, at a later date. Um, the last thing that I had on my list was just an announcement, um, in regards to the Department of Senior Services. They do have an opening on their advisory board, so if anybody has any interest or if you know of anybody that would serve on that advisory board, um, well, um, welcome and accepting expression of interest forms for that. So subject to any questions that you have, that is the report. I hope that covered everything that Phil was looking for.
Okay.
One item on your, uh, list here was townships.
Yes.
Can you expand on that?
I am not as knowledgeable in that, but if Jamie is still on the phone, uh, Phil did inform me that that was an item that Jamie wanted to have brought. Um, I, um, so I don't know if Jamie is available to expand on that.
Jamie, are you there to discuss that townships?
If Jamie's not there, I can just say briefly that the conversation that I had with her, was that she would like us to pursue transfer of duties, uh, from some of the townships. It's easier, you know, a- as the commission is well aware, we have difficulty recruiting folks to serve in township offices. And, um, so there are a few different ways of dealing with that. One would be to consolidate townships. But when you consolidate townships, it changes electoral boundaries and sort of hearkens back to our prior discussion about the, um, commission districts. And so it would be easier to, um, just transfer the duties and leave the boundaries as they are. And so just wanted, um, I guess, to sort of telegraph that that is the intent and see if there was any, um, objection to that from the commissioners.
I would ask the question, uh, statutorily from the state. Uh, are we able to transfer duties, uh, from, as they're assigned? Or is, is that our re, uh, job to do that?
There are specific sets of circumstances under which that is permitted. Um, one set of circumstances has to do with, um, i- if they don't have officers, um, which we've talked about. Another is if a township has failed to file a budget for, I believe it's two years in a row. So yeah, you can't just, um, I guess, willy-nilly transfer duties, but under sets of circumstances that indicate that they are no longer a functional entity, um, you, you do have the statutory authority to transfer duties.
Would any of this that we're talking about at all require a vote of that township?
No, not if it's done according to the statutory framework. There are also, um, abilities to consolidate or merge districts that do require a vote, but, um, under the framework that we're talking about, that would not be required.
I guess to get this ball rolling a little further, I, I would like to see, uh, a, a report or statistics, uh, you know, of the number of townships there are in Saline County, and how many of them, uh, don't have officers in their positions? Or, or how many of them, you know, I mean, could, if we're going to change something, do we have to change it for all the townships? Uh, because I know some of them are, are quite active within their townships and others aren't. So can we do it for some and not others, or how does that work?
Uh, yes. Not only can you, but, um, you should, I guess, if, uh, again, if a township is active, the township is levying taxes, has a full slate of officers, spending money, then they would not fit into that statutory framework for transfer of duties. So it's only those townships that, that aren't active that we're really talking about here.
It's my opinion that this probably warrants a study session, and, and it comes back, time set aside, and we get educated and, uh, and, uh, enlightened as to what's taking place and what needs to happen. That's my opinion.
Yeah. I concur. I mean, I think it'd be interesting to see how many townships we're talking about, what is the cause to look at those townships? And like Commissioner Vidrickson said, let's get more into it, but thank you, Jim. Anyone else? I concur, let's look into that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else? Item number five.
Commissioners' comments.
I don't have any comments, except today we will look at the election of new officers. So as soon as this, we're after the announcement, so we will look at reorganization. And, but that's all I have, really. Don't have anything else. Any other commissioners? Item number six.
Announcements.
I was going to speak about the senior services, but Hannah already got me on that one, so it's like, that's good, we got that covered, so. Anything else, any other announcements to go?
Just a reminder that next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and the building will be closed.
Okay. All right. And I would ask that we take a three-minute recess before we move into the reorganization.
And shouldn't this be really quick?
Uh, yes. The recess is going to be really quick.
I would, well, I would assume we could do the election of officers in less than three minutes, less than two minutes, unless it's.
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you. Okay. We're back in the meeting. At this time, we will move into election of officers.
I, I don't think you can go yet. You said the three minutes is enough. Can't go back in. Technically. Is that correct?
We have just about one more minute left.
Thank you.
You should be good, Mr. Chairman, if you want to proceed.
Thank you, Hannah. At this time, we will proceed into the reorganization of the Saline County Commissioners for 2022. I will open the floor for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate, uh, Commissioner Jim Weiss for chairman for 2022.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we nominate, uh, Commissioner Weiss for chairman for 2022. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Vidrickson for vice chair for 2022.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that Commissioner Bob Vidrickson is for vice chairman. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations for secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate, uh, Monty Shaq, Commissioner Shadwick for the secretary's position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Commissioner Shadwick nominated for secretary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Nay.
Sorry, it's already been nominated that you're a secretary. Motion carries, sir.
Bring your notepad.
Yep, yep. So anyway, so at this time, the chairman is Commissioner Weiss, vice chairman is Vidrickson, and secretary is Shadwick. And, uh, I will call, the motion is seconded, and so I will call for a roll vote that is nomination sees. It's all done. So this mer- meeting is adjourned.
You're good.
I'll take that into consideration.